Hi folks, let's get to order for the -- is welcome for the State Council meeting on August 21st. And we have the goal calls. Mayor Kirk.
Present.
Debbie Meyer Dexter. She is on at the conference and wants to be excused. Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Gaden.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Warren.
Here.
City Mayor McGee.
Here.
Attorney Lord.
Here.
So Debbie Meyer Dexter is at the Council Transit meeting and she would like to be excused from this meeting, so I will need a motion to excuse her.
I will be excused from this meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? She's been excused. Alright, let's rise to the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is the time for further comments. We're going to hear the sheet coming out here. And so if anyone would like to speak to the council, you can come up as soon as we get the folks who have signed up. You have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you reside in the city or not. Alright, and Tony, oh, I'm going to miss, I'm just going to ask Tony, I don't want to mangle your last name.
Good evening. My name is Tony DiBengrazio. I reside at 1220 West Fourth Street, Portland, Washington. I thank you for allowing an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here out of concern for why there is a proposed change toward zoning, where they want to take single-family residences and allow the two more, like motorhomes or trailers, to be put on those lots. I personally am very disappointed that they would try this process when in fact, I believe we have zoning, different zoning laws in place to be utilized. I'm also concerned about the impact on the surrounding property owners' property value. I'm retired, I don't know about everybody here, but my largest asset is my home. I plan on living there until I can't live there anymore. At that time, I will sell my house so that I have money to move into assisted living. And if in fact, the city is determined to try to shut this down our throats like they did that fluoride project, I'll speak him with you, not at you. But you better put on your battle armor because we're not taking this one sitting down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, Rachel Ringer, please.
Oh yeah, I think that's a good printer. My name is Rachel Ringer, P.O. Box 1102. I'm here on behalf of P.A. Can, I'm a board member, and so is Monica Ferris. And we are here to invite you to the Fourth Annual International Overdose Awareness Walk. It is on August 31st, which is a Friday, at 5:00 at the Courthouse Bell Tower. From there, we'll be listening to speakers for the opening, walk down, go to the pier, listen to speakers over there as well, and then afterwards, we'll have the LA drummers. So we invite you to participate with this. Also, there are two chances for poster making parties. One is this Sunday at Tappy at noon, and you can come there, and we have all the supplies to make posters. We just ask no children under the age of five. And the next one is on Monday, next Monday, First United Methodist Church, and that will be at 5:30. That is a potluck. We will have all supplies available, children are able to come to that event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Scott Kennedy.
Thank you. Scott Kennedy, 136 Old Black Diamond Road, Port Angeles, Honorable Mayor Brook, City Council members, and city management. I'm Scott Kennedy. I'm here tonight to represent OPAH, which is the Olympic Peninsula Rowing Association. And we're here to express our thanks as you consider a minor amendment to some property that will really help OPAH move its mission forward. I serve as president, got a nine-member board for OPAH. We've got board member Jim Heckland with us here tonight. We have family members, we have rowers, we have our head coach Debbie Swinford, and our adult assistant coach, Deanna Oker, she's looking both ways. But just a good contingent of rowers, and you can see just a lot of support for this program.
Scott, could the rowing group stand up so we can see?
Yes, please. Would ever, all the rowers stand. Thank you. Well, mainly tonight, I want to express our deep gratitude for the tremendous support that we've had from the city all along the way for OPAH, for providing rowing opportunities for youth and adults in our community. I wish Mr. John Halberg could be here tonight. I think he's probably smiling down on this, smiling down on us as we go through this process tonight. John was the energetic and inspiring force behind getting OPAH started, making sure that youth had opportunities to learn rowing. We've had champions come from our town. But mainly, we had a vision of developing a first-class rowing program and a rowing center here in Port Angeles, supporting the Olympic Peninsula. And we're here tonight to continue carrying that vision forward with the help of many in the community. John had the help of many in the community who've supported rowing over time. Our mission is to serve and to develop skilled rowers of all ages and of all capabilities, not just those that are natural athletes. OPAH is able to provide expert coaching in a setting that's safe and that nurtures the teamwork, motivation, perseverance, responsibility, and stewardship of resources out there on its hook. And these are things that are needed to be successful on the water, but we also think in life. And really, our basic goal is to develop great citizens and great growers, and to give them the opportunity to compete and the opportunity to win. So we currently have about 30 youth growers, we also have about 30 adult growers. Our goal is to get to a program where we have 100 youth growers, 60 of whom will be competitive. We'll have varsity and novice, as we do now, in a smaller size, and then some 40 recreational growers, along with our adult growers that are huge support to the program. So our goal is to continue to grow. To do that, we need to move the current boathouse from its current location to a location that's safer for growers, and also allows expansion of facilities to accommodate the program growth in the future. One of my last meetings with Mr. John Halberg was actually at night to go down to the beach to the property that's under consideration tonight to measure, to see, would it be the right place for moving the boathouse. John was very excited about moving the program, the boathouse there. It's a perfect spot. It's safer for lunching, the shelves from the beach, it has room for expanding the current boathouse and future facilities, it's an area that doesn't suffer erosion in those rare southeasterly storms. It also lies in front of 3,000 beautiful meters of rowing lane that's protected from both boat traffic and from the wind for the most part. So we're truly thankful for the support that the city has shown, and do promise to continue to do the work that it takes to grow this wonderful opportunity for Port Angeles and for the Peninsula community. We want to give special thanks to McKinley Paper Company that is offering to release this area back to the city for this purpose. A thanks goes out to Vice President Wilfred Brinkhorn, and to Mary Sue French, who I think is here tonight, and Amy Doherty, folks that have worked behind the scenes to help engineer this. We're very appreciative of the support that McKinley is showing to the community, and we only wish their success in getting here soon under full operation. A huge thanks goes to the city council for the support, past mayor Patrick Downey as well, Jim Moran, who's been a member of OPAH and a treasurer of OPAH in the past, but to our city management team as well, who have worked very hard to engineer this opportunity for the community and for us. So thank you for your dedicated work to engineer this, and we appreciate your support for youth sports in this community and for rowing in particular. So thank you.
Thank you. So there's, nobody else signed up? Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Or council? And remember, you don't have to give us your address, you can just let us know that whether you reside in the city or not. So anybody else who would like to speak to city council on any issue whatsoever? Alright, we'll see none, we'll move on to the agenda. Are there any late items?
I'm here, council director Nathan West would like to make one clarification. So Madam Mayor, mayor's staff did intend to item J3 to the consent agenda this evening. It's a $69,000 contract, some of which has been presented to the council previously. We didn't anticipate that being on consent. We apologize for the misprint on the agenda.
Alright, any objections to putting that into the consent agenda? Alright, any other late items? No late items? Alright. So we are moved to the consent agenda, and let me read, well, actually, let me ask, does anybody want anything in the consent agenda pulled?
Madam Mayor, I don't want it pulled, but I would like to make an additional comment on, I don't know if it's really, if I might.
Oh sure. So let me read the consent agenda and then move on. So the consent agenda, City Council minutes of July 18th, 2018, expenditure report from July 28th through August 10th, 2018, in the amount of $2,504,460.74. The minor amendment to McKinley lease, emergency generator maintenance contract, the 2018 landfill gas fuel replacement project, SW02-17/Project, the courtyard fuel pump suction line and fuel pump dispenser replacement, and the network segmentation and MIGI LAN configuration, CFP
Thank you. Just an additional comment, I'd like to echo Dr. Kennedy's remarks, and I would like to signal out for special recognition Nathan West for his hard work on putting this together, and personal thank you for that. As Dr. Kennedy pointed out, I was here, one of the original members of OPAH, I was the original treasurer of OPAH, rather, of OPAH. And so we struggled with John, and John was a close personal friend of mine, and so this means not only a lot to our community, but I'd like to point out that rowing offers more college scholarships for our kids than any other sport, including football, basketball, baseball, anything. So we have an opportunity now to offer a sport on a larger scale that will put more of our kids in college than any other sport available today. So again, thank you Nathan for all your hard work on this.
And I just would like to add that how you were here exactly where we live makes the world of sense, and it just, it seems like this is a really absolute wonderful.
And then I may just wanted to add my applause and appreciation for everyone making this happen. If you've met John Halberg, you know this is a good thing. If you've met John Halberg, you understand the vibrancy and energy rowing has brought to our community. If you've met John Halberg, you know you want to cheer on the kids that are out just working in, whether it's dusk or dark, they're out rowing. And if you met John Halberg, you're in favor of this wonderful activity for our community for all ages. He put rowing machines in the senior center, I mean, he didn't overlook anything. So I'm just delighted, and I just keep going guys, just keep rowing.
Counsel, if I may also add, just a real sincere thank you to Dr. Kennedy and Rowing Club for their patience as we work through this issue. A huge thank you to Director Delacotta, who worked diligently on this issue as well. In particular, I want to thank McKinley for recognizing the community value that this adjustment made, and ultimately, we're really appreciative, and we have a lot of interest in making this youth activity a success in our community, so we're appreciative of that. Also, very appreciative to Mary Sue French, who's in the audience, who was very effective in helping us work through the issue with McKinley.
And said that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written. Second.
Alright, has there any further discussion on any of the other items as well? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. So thank you all. So on to our next item, which is the public hearing for the 2018 electrical resource grant. Who is taking on this item?
Looks like we have Rick. Yes. Go for it, Rick. Okay, I appreciate it. Oh, I said advance, this folks kind of get into my throat here, like a lot of people. Rick, here, our resource manager, I'm here to request something that's become a pretty common item for the city. Every two years, Washington State requires all electric utilities to provide a five- and 10-year forecast of its electric load, as well as indicating what generating resource will service that load. Since the Port Angeles is a 100% low-polling customer of Vonville Power, this is a straightforward process. Vonville Power has provided us with both the five- and 10-year forecast, and has indicated they'll service 100% of the city's load. With that, staff has recommended that the city council open and conduct a public hearing, close the hearing, and pass the attached resolution. Thank you.
Wonderful. Alright, so we will open the public hearing. Is there any questions, discussions, items, anybody would like to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, we need you to wait till 6:30 on the vote here.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you're right, we are nine minutes early. Okay, well, in that case, we will go on to, we will hold that thought, and move on to resolutions not requiring a public hearing. So let's move on to H1. I think we'll have enough time to do that before we move on. So Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Policy, H1, on the page.
Madam Mayor, counsel, this item is a policy that has been put together in the form of a resolution to reflect the council consensus that was achieved at the July 18th City Council Work Session on Lodging Tax Policy. As you may recall, a number of policies were presented to council on that evening, and ultimately, four policies were selected from the list to be moved forward with, recognizing that we may add to the list in the future. For now, we presented you with a policy that we believe reflects the outcome of that work session. Staff will be more than happy to answer any questions on that resolution, as well as we would encourage additional council discussion of the resolution.
Okay, counsel, does anybody have any comments or questions or items to bring up? So I only have one. On reading this, it is on page H3, the last point, it's number four, and I think it just needs a little bit clearer wording, because it reads, "To expedite the efficient and timely execution of lodging tax allocation, the city manager is hereby authorized," and the right is hereby delegated to the city manager to execute the contracts and agreements. So it seems a little redundant, so I was going to just say, "The city manager is hereby authorized to execute the contracts and agreements once the council approves such allocation." It just seems like it's clear when the city manager can do that, and we're given the, has thereby delegated the right, so.
I would say that the fact that it mentions them as allocations kind of covers the fact that we have allocated, so that shows that we've gone through that first step.
I saw.
That's, that was my argument.
I can go your way with that, does that make sense that the?
I agree with you on the redundancy of the next phrase.
Okay. So the amendment would just say the execution of lodging tax-approved allocations, so that way it's obvious.
That's more clear.
That's even more clear.
Could you read this sentence as it was wanted included? It's a loss, we need some more in translation.
Okay, it says, "To expedite the efficient and timely execution of lodging tax-approved allocations, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute contracts and agreements." It just simplifies the sentence. Anybody else have any other issues, comments, questions, or not going to read the resolution? A resolution of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting policies to ensure a balanced approach to funding promotions, events, operations, and capital investments from the city's lodging tax fund.
So one of the policy proposals is, "In determining the recipients and amounts of event grants, priority shall be given to events held mid-October through mid-May." Mid-October is when Crab Fest is, and it's unclear to me whether that would be included or excluded from mid-October through mid-May. I'm not saying it needs to change, but if I was on the lodging tax, I would be noticing that, I'm not sure quite what to do with that.
So what do you suggest?
I'm Gabriel Allen, and I always felt that mid-September is probably more of the target for me, but I think that I'm not, I think I'm in a more position on that, but I agree, the beginning of October at least, I would consider part of that shoulder season where we want those events.
Just not split hairs, but first of all, we have, it's September, we have the lodging draft festival, the Crab Festival is the first week end in October, not mid-October, so therefore, I looked at this and I felt that this is the true shoulder seasons that we have to address, and this is something that I think the Chamber of Congress would agree with on this, so I feel that's appropriate, mid-October through, through mid-May, because we do have two significant festivals in September and first weekend of October.
Any other comments, questions? Alright, so counsel, I will need a motion.
I move to pass the resolution adopting policies regarding the application of lodging and lodging tax plans.
I need a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Alright, this is a little bit of a leak. So we got toward, about two and a half minutes ago. So let's try to, let's go on to, I guess, the next one, H2? Yeah, H2, Local Government Investment Pool Resolution.
Good evening, counsel. Trina McKee is unable to attend, she has a sick daughter, so I don't really go testing this tonight. As with any investment policy, we need the governing body to agree to the terms that they lay out. So they have required us to present the prospectus to the city council, and you were required to read it and sign off that you have read it. So we use the state investment pool for investing a large majority of our funds, and with the recent changes in staffing, we realized that we have Nathan listed as the city manager in this, so we can hold off until that's actually, that has actually happened. But we didn't want to have to do one for Dan, and then in two weeks, go back and say we need one for Nathan, so we would appreciate if you signed this off September 6th or later, and just let us know, so that we can send it off to them. So we're asking that you pass and adopt the resolution to invest monies in the local government investment pool, and update delegation of authority for investing city monies, which would include Trina, McKee, as our city treasurer, and Nathan would have holder side of that.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion on this item? So my only concern was on page H10, looking at investments for, you know, we have seven persons who are at this today, and their returns are really, really, really tiny, and I just wondered if they're?
That is an effect of what is going on in the normal banking environment today. Being a governmental agency, we have restrictions on what we can invest in, and we're not allowed to go for anything with a higher risk and more hedge fund types of opportunities, which we wouldn't want to do. So the investment is basically going to be equal or slightly higher than what you would get in a banking environment. And this is right along the same lines of what we have going with US Bank, who we use for our day-to-day operational banking, and it is higher than most banks at this time, so not much, but just, you know, we'll have to make a little bit of a difference, so.
I read a few of these, a couple of observations. First of all, it is important to note that either those, these are basically money market funds, they're not insured by the FDIC, so that's basically what we would call an investment risk. But having said that, we're right, this is, this is where the marketplace is right now. The fees might be a little bit higher than I would like to see in a large pool of funds like this, but again, we are also getting, taking advantage of the economic scale, because if we just invested our own monies and not used the state pool, we probably couldn't even get this at this rate. So although it is anemic, unfortunately, it's reality.
I'd also like to note that we invest in bonds and other instruments that are available at higher interest rates. This is more for liquid funds that we need to have available for paying large capital projects and other things. We hold a certain amount in the LGIP, which is only a small percentage of our overall investments. Most investments, we're getting a much higher rate of return on, but they're anywhere from three to five to six years long, some are callable and some are not. So anytime we have an available fund that we don't think we need for operations, it goes into a longer-term bond, sometimes a six-month bond if we're not really sure, but you do get a higher rate of return when you invest in a longer-term bond.
And I know for me, it's always, and I knew, I know you mentioned that our bank is US, the US bank, and it just, I always keep wishing and hoping to push it for a local bank, you know, a true local bank, so I'm hoping that at one point, we'll get there. Alright, counsel, is there anything else? Any, right? So. So what do you think of the resolution? Resolution? No, this is the lodging tax.
H three.
H four. You don't read it?
I do remember, H four. The resolution of this.
H fifteen?
Here it is.
H fifteen. With the resolution authorizing investments of the City of Port Angeles monies in the local government investment pool.
So moved. Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes here, this way. Okay, now we can go back to the public hearing on the 2018 electric resource plan. So, um, I know we've had the presentation already. So, um, and, um, this is...
Madam Mayor, while you're pulling that up, I just didn't want to reiterate that the UAC Advisory Committee did consider this item, and they did provide a favorable recommendation on the item. I apologize, that was not noted in the stack report.
Thank you. And, um, the resolution reads as a resolution of the city council, uh, a resolution of the city council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington approving the 2018 electric utility resource plan. So for that, is there any issues or, um, I am now opening the public hearing, and if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item, now is your time. This is the second time around, we'll just say that no one's interested, we'll close this public hearing, and, um, so counsel, what should we do with this? So, in that case, we are not going to close this, we are gonna... We're closing the public hearing. So, and then this will be moved, um...
I move to adopt the resolution of the city council of the City of Port Angeles approving the 2018 electric utility resource plan. Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes here, this way. Okay, so we are, um, which, um, so now we'll move on to the budget amendment. We will conduct the second hearing for the 2018 budget amendment number two.
We, um, only have a few capital items, um, that make up the majority of the changes for reprioritization and approval of additional secondary non-existing projects. Those are never seen in the details of the amendment. If you have any questions, you can ask Nathan, myself, or Serena, our budget officer who is here, to address this. And we are requesting that you conduct the second reading of budget amendment number two and move to adopt the 2018 budget amendment number two.
Alright, so let me do the reading on this one. Orders of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amendment 2018 budget and funds. So, um, any discussion? Alright, so having no discussion, counsel, what would you like to do?
I move to adopt the 2018 budget amendment number two, ordinance.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, it passes here, this way. On to code compliance enforcement fund ordinance. First reading on this, and then we'll continue this to September fourth.
This is, uh, this is the first reading of a proposed ordinance. The only thing the ordinance does is create a new fund. So this new fund would be used to supply the money needed to support court actions for code enforcement and similar enforcement enforcement actions. So we have, in the, the city ordinances and the same law, there are a variety of remedies available to enforce state statutes and ordinances. Some of those remedies involve a court action, not all of them, just some of them do. Where a court action is involved, the city has to pay the same fees that other people pay. In the past, we did not have a dedicated source for those kind of fees, and that included a damper on, uh, on our ability to use court action for enforcement. This ordinance simply creates a fund. Doesn't put money in one yet. And it doesn't directly relate to any particular enforcement actions, simply first step of creating a fund. And it does not support creating that.
Alright, so, um, let me read it first. In order to the City of Port Angeles, Washington, creating a fund for the administration and prosecution of code compliance actions and adding a new section 3.23 to chapter three of the Port Angeles municipal code. So, council, is there any discussion?
So does this fund not support a code enforcement officer to go out? This is just for court action, or does this support someone prior to court action?
No, this is not support personnel or, or any of those actions prior to, this is simply to support court actions.
Is it correct, Colonel, that this is related to our, um, project over, near Fairmont?
Uh, yes, that'd be the first one in line. Uh, that, uh, project, it is filed on court. Because there was federal lien on the property, it involved longer waiting period, an informal waiting period on that, that's now expired, so we would be, uh, pursuing, ready to proceed with the next step.
So we are creating the code compliance enforcement fund, which we really badly need, so I'm, I'm highly in favor of this. But to follow up, um, council member Meredith's question, we, enforcement, compliance enforcement is a broad topic. We definitely have to work with lighted properties, but it's more than that. So I'm hoping in the future, we can, um, broaden the compliance enforcement fund as funds become available to include other enforcement issues that council and the community need to deal with. Is that correct?
So counsel, that is correct. Let, let me, um, be clear, we do have an upcoming work session to discuss resource allocation to code compliance and the future of code compliance in Port Angeles. This essentially sets a fund, um, as a placeholder so that we have the tool necessary when funding becomes available to utilize and move forward. The specific focus of the creation of the fund was to ensure that we can successfully go after those lightest private properties that we have discussed previously. And, but ultimately, we do have some additional discussions to have relative to resource allocation to this fund to ensure that we're more globally successful and not just those few residents we've outlined relative to lighted property.
Thank you.
I know we talk and kind of rail about code compliance a lot, but I appreciate seeing staff working at the United States under the radar and getting these ducks around moving this forward.
Yeah, I was just gonna emphasize that discussion on September twenty fifth is an important thing to come to if you're interested in code compliance. Often work sessions are, are much more involved than business meetings that we have with these raucous public comment sessions. But, um, I appreciate that we're doing that, and thank you for setting up some of the tools in advance.
And like I said, my, my only comment was that, um, at this point, it's, it is run by the city attorney because of the court issues. So, but I would expect again in the future to expand it so that hopefully, you know, which is right, as, as a placeholder, this is a good beginning. So thank you. Alright, so we have had the first hearing on this, um, and, uh, so we will, is there any further discussion before we continue this on? Alright, so we will continue this on to September fourth. And so we will move on to, uh, other considerations, outreach program, please social work co-responder program presentation.
Counsel Walker working on the side, I'll draw your attention to, uh, another, um, item that I forgot to mention under late items. You do have on your dais, the Port Angeles Fire Department report, which for the record did run in prior to, uh, the police department report, and we thought we wanted to make sure to mention that for late items.
So for all of you guys in the audience, I don't know if you've seen it, but I just thought I'd have to share, because I love the sense of labor. Port Angeles Fire Department, 2018 meeting report, we have been very busy. Sincerely, the Fire Department. So, I appreciate it.
That's not mayor, there's more to the report, and that's important.
Please note that technically for the record, you are receiving the Fire Department meeting report before the Police Department meeting report.
That is why Ken is sitting off to the side.
Alright.
Okay, good evening, uh, mayor and counsel, and, uh...
Thank you.
You know, it's, it's hard to be upstaged by the Fire Department, but we, you know, we'll, we'll figure something out. What I'm here to talk to you about tonight is a subject that I'm very excited to talk to you about, and I've got, uh, three of my colleagues here to help me talk about it. Um, Amy Miller on my right, Masters and Social Work Outreach Coordinator and Community Change Agent, um, partner with PA PD and BMO. Immediately my left, Mary Hogan, Executive Director of BMO, or Volunteers of Medicine of the Olympics. And China Younger, next to Mary, um, project and, um, operations? Okay, director, so, um, three of our partners. The subject we're talking to you about tonight is, uh, continuing, uh, project of PA PD. You know, we have limited resources, as you know, and we, um, well, we'll, we'll go on 27,000 calls this year. Often the calls for service we go on are people that we need to, to help with in some fashion, but they're not going to be going to jail, they're not going to be going in the back of one of Ken's paramedic fire department ambulances, and we'll probably see him maybe a couple more times a day. So for us, getting people into services, um, helping them upstream if we can, uh, in an organized, professional way, that's gonna mean something, um, is what this project is about. And volunteers of medicine were able to secure some funding, um, to move the ball a little bit farther down the field. And, um, I've got something else to talk to you about at the end that's gonna be an even, uh, bigger addition to this program. So I'll let, uh, Amy jump into what we've been doing. And the slide up there is an optical illusion, Amy and Officer Walker are not actually carrying those letters. You can see that in the picture, so.
We carry that sign around all the time.
So, thank you, counsel.
Thank you for having us. Can you guys hear me okay? Uh, so my name is Amy Miller. I am a social worker, I have about, uh, eighteen years of experience in postgraduate social work. Um, this is what I do. And, uh, I'm thrilled to be here to talk about, uh, what we started.
Excuse me, Amy, I just want to make sure that you're getting recorded. Is the mic, is she getting recorded?
If you could pull the, the top one above the computer, pull that closer to you.
This one that says...
Or is that the light, oh, the other one, sorry, the other one. One is not the light.
We'll talk into the lamp. How's that better? We, uh, Chief and I have been, uh, working on this program for over two years now, trying to get this up and running, so this is very exciting. We started with BMO, um, in about June, about June first, I think we said, is our go-live date. Um, and since then, we have been really successful. It's only been running, um, you know, for two and a half months, but we've had just about forty-five individual separate encounters. Um, so those are forty-five individual people, which I might have seen nine, ten times each. And we get referrals from the local churches, the police department, obviously. Ahnet has been the, the decent referral source for us, BMO, the food banks, Reddy House. We partner with, um, BMO, the food bank, Ole Cap, Salvation Army, Taffy. The PA New Rotary has, um, joined our banks and, um, is going to be helping us with some donations for the hygiene bags that we hand out. What I do, when I encounter somebody, is, um, I'm friendly. I talk to them, I try to assess, uh, what their needs might be in that moment. Um, so it can be an array of things. Sometimes, uh, it's us going out to encampments that are out there, um, sometimes it's us going out on a call, um, sometimes it's, uh, me just walking around the pier and seeing folks that looks like they might need a friend. Um, so I reach out wherever I am all the time, you can ask my husband about that. Uh, yeah, I think it's roped into a lot of things. And then I go, I, once I assess the need, I offer referrals. I don't duplicate services, I don't provide most services. I offer referrals to the services that are already out there. I provide assistance in removing barriers for those individuals getting into those services. So if it's an ID, I help them get an ID. A good example, it was a, uh, younger lady that I just met, uh, recently met at the food bank, needed a pair of glasses, so I'm able to help her reach out to the services in town that help with that service. You can read the, the PowerPoint. But I help people meet the requirements that are set out there for them, for them to engage in those services. Sometimes those requirements are pages and pages long. Um, and a lot of their focus is on surviving the day. Where are they gonna sleep that night? Where are they gonna stay warm? Where are they gonna get their meals? Um, I offer those assistance, uh, uh, referrals also in helping them find where the hot meals are gonna be served. Um, but when their focus is on meeting their basic needs, meeting those other packets, those requirements, it's not their top priority, I can help with that. And sometimes it's just a ride to the appointment that they've already got set because it's not on the bus route, or they don't have money to get on the bus. Uh, this is definitely a think outside the box kind of program. Um, and I thank the PA PD for being able to be so willing to do so because it's really affecting people in a positive way. I mentioned all the partnerships. Um, this kind of idea started with Gloucester, Massachusetts, in the Pari Initiative, um, and is dated back to about 2008, and it's coming over from the East Coast. My favorite slide. This is what we do, we fill the gaps. Again, I don't duplicate what's already out there, I, uh, help assist folks get, getting into the, the services that are already there. I find gaps in those, uh, in the community, uh, the provider community, and I help to fill them, or I help to identify them to the providers. They may not get that feedback from their clients, and I'm able to provide that. Uh, we have a lot of success stories, um, a lot of success stories, and I could be up here all night, I wasn't told I had a time limit. And my husband tells me I can do three stories, so... And my husband tells me I can do three stories, so. But I just want to share with you that it works, it works, and it works in a variety of different ways. I get phone calls from local churches about folks that they know about that have been living in their car in the parking lot. I'm able to just go out there and meet with them where they are, and help to engage them in the community. And sometimes, it's, you know, offering them assistance through Serenity House, through their job program, or, you know, other things, letting people know that there are food programs out there. The food bank is wonderful, there's hot meals being served. Couple of the stories I will share is, there's a young lady that I've been working with, trying to get her into treatment, which is something she wants to do, but every now and then will change her mind. And so, when she is on the street, she's living in her car, and she's difficult to find sometimes, so we kind of put out our own little informal memo, APB. I'm learning the terminology. And I let the officers know with the staff meeting, hey, I'm looking for her, if you see her, can you give me a call? And that has happened at least two or three times now with different people, where they've been able to do that for me, so I can run out there and check in with them, because sometimes they're not in the same location twice. That has been really, really helpful for me. We've developed a lot of partnerships, we're talking to a lot of the agencies, everyone's very welcoming, everyone seems to be really willing to partner. I think a lot of that might be because they want to have an outreach person, like myself, but funds and staffing are such where their social workers need to be behind their desks. And so, I don't have to do that, in fact, I don't even have a desk. So, I'm out there, and people know me, and people refer to me for information, so I'm happy to provide that. I think, for me, the biggest success that I feel, other than what Brian's going to share at the end here, is as the shelter, as we were learning that the local shelter was going to be shutting its doors, I was able to get in there and meet with the folks that were using the shelter pretty badly, and talk about what they needed, and what they had, and where the deficits were, and we were able to, with BMO, a huge help there, able to help to provide some comfort to those folks who were losing that stability. And so, that was huge, and I think that's what really brought us into that community. So, I appreciate that. And I'll stop with my stories now. I don't know if I'm allowed to take questions, but.
So, I'll add a couple things, and then we, we're glad to take some questions if you have them. This idea of partnering police officers or social workers is relatively new. We, like Amy said, we've been working on this for two and a half years. We brought Arlington, Massachusetts Police Department out here in 2016, and we've spent some time with Everett PD, Paul's boat as well, and Sonoma Sheriff's Department. So, we've got a little bit of on-the-ground research on what works and what doesn't. One of our challenges is, we don't have extra capacity in the police department. So, when Amy rides with us, or Beal Ware, from Serenity House, rides with us, if it's the officer assigned to the shift, they're with us chasing the radio, going to the next call, doing the follow-up, doing the reports, so they have to work their time in around that. One of our successes through the Stone Garden Grant with Foot Patrol, that was dedicated officer time, adding capacity, you know, using other funding to put more officers out there. So, through this sort of initial stages of this program, we've been awarded a grant to expand this program through the Washington Sheriff's and Chiefs Association Law Spic. We got notified on Friday that we've been given $136,000 to have a full-time version of Amy, and to have some police overtime. We've got a really fast turnaround, you'll hear back from us, we have to work with city manager, finance, legal, we have too much of work, but we've been told we've been awarded, I think they awarded a program statewide to do this, so we're one of those. We went down a week ago on Monday to do a presentation, and this has been in the works for a while. But with that, one of the components, I think we're in the agency to ask for police officer overtime, and not that we can't do it otherwise, because we actually still can do it, but we're less effective. And with our other program, our Foot Patrol program, we actually know how to do this when we have some dedicated time. It isn't everything, but it's just, it's adding a little bit more to what we can provide. And you'll hear back from us soon on the Law Spic grant, and, you know, requesting permission to accept it. But the people that made this happen are sitting right here, so please get questions for them.
Thank you, that was absolutely wonderful, and it's great that we've got this. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, this is amazing, our community needs this, I'm very grateful for this, thank you so much, I love you.
You know, there's a number of examples of what people call like a name-by-name database, and, you know, so some communities have said, hey, we're going to go for zero veteran homeless, and we're going to figure out who those folks are, we're going to see what each individual needs. Instead of just saying, oh, they're homeless, they must need, you know, a housing voucher and, you know, a name by name shelter, we say, what does this specific person need? And it's kind of like in the PR, you wouldn't expect the doctor to go around and like, just say, oh, you know, they're in the hospital, and, you know, an aspirin, and side op surgery. You know, we figure out what each person needs, and that's kind of what this model is. So, is that, tell me more about the model, and kind of how what you do is different from the existing services in the community.
Yes, I think that's exactly what we do, and, you know, what we do is crisis intervention. We meet people where they're at, when they're there. And I think what I do very differently is, I'm not, you know, I'm not sitting in a building waiting for clients to come to me, saying that they have a need and they want me to help them with it. That's difficult for some folks. And I think another thing that I do very differently is, I'm offering them some assistance in getting their goals met. I find out what their goals are. This woman that I spoke about earlier, that needed glasses, I mean, she's living in a tent. She's, that's what she wanted, and so that's what we work on. And I think that's different, you know, and there's no door, I mean, you can't refer all of those different kinds of needs that happen. So, I'm sort of a great big open door. And I try to help direct people's needs and develop trust. And I think being out there, out there on the street, helps me do that, because I'm, I see them, I see them, they know my name, I know their name, they know what I can help with, and they know they can ask me things, and, you know, I'm learning, I'm learning every day where more help can be found.
Brian?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? The Perry Program from Massachusetts, we have a spin-off here called, I believe, it's Clean?
Yep. That's this program right here.
Okay, so this is the actual spin-off for the next iteration of Clean?
We let them rename it, you know, Amy had to pick the brand identity, and she's got some reasons behind it, but.
Okay, thank you.
To answer the question about the individual, Mary can tell you a little bit about the backend, because a lot of these, this program should require a lot of attention once we find people and refer them, so if she can quickly tell you a little bit about how they do that.
One more thing, Mary, sorry, and I, you can never tell, I'm really nervous. The difference between this and Clean is that Clean was very specific to working on addiction issues, and I'm broader, and so that's why I wanted it to be a broader.
Okay, you know, I was familiar with the Clean program, but I wasn't making a connection.
That's what started all of these discussions.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, one of the resources we have available to us is the HMIS system, and some of you are familiar with that, that's the Homelessness Management Information System, and we all data-share, all of us in the community, and all the nonprofits that work with the homeless. So, Amy's able to go in and check on somebody, have they already been in the system, have they already been to Serenity House, have they already been through other programs, and so we don't repeat things over and over again. So, that's a huge asset to us. And this program, the way it's structured, allows us to grow in so many ways, and as we add more people on and more services on, I know our medical director at BMO is anxious to get out there and actually bring some services to those in the encampments, like wound care, maybe vaccinations, maybe some screenings, so that's coming down the line as we work with other entities to get funding to really spread this program out, because if they can't come to us, we have to go to them. They need help, and we are the ones that are, that's what we're here to do, we're here to help the community. Because BMO was structured back in the early 2000s to help those that couldn't help themselves, who couldn't access care, and so this is just an extension of that, is being able to go out in the community and bring care to them.
Thank you, I want to just, I guess, ask if, as you guys are out there, and you're seeing quite a different light than we see, usually on a daily basis, if there's things in there that you see that we as a city can improve, you know, are there policies we can put in place that will help you do this work? Are there areas or infrastructure that is needed? So, I said, please keep an eye open for any of that thing, for those things, unless no, because we do want to, we all work in a way, so any way we can help, that would be wonderful.
So, I'm the board chair for BMO, so I've been a big supporter of this program for a long time, and really, this has been a great presentation. One thing that I think we as public service, we have, we're kind of in a unique position where, you know, we have an opportunity to communicate to the public the value of programs like this, where there's a lot of people in our community who feel very harmed by some of the externalities of, you know, the epidemic homelessness, all these things, that kind of, you know, they feel approached on their life in Port Angeles. And, you know, I really believe that connecting people with the proper services is the best way that we can grow the community and solve some of these problems, these externalities. And so, to see, you know, this connection happening between the people and services, and also between nonprofits, is so valuable, to, you know, come together as a community with a vision of, you know, how do we want to experience this place that we live in, and how do we want to care for our fellow citizens that desperately need these services that haven't been able to access them? And so, the value of this program, I think, is just immense, and it was just a huge hole that I'm really glad to see us start to fill, so thank you very much.
Well, I think the information that Amy brings forward is invaluable. I'm the board chair for the Homelessness Task Force, and trying to put all that information together and share that with the task force, and where those places that really need extra help, where we need to be as nonprofits, where other organizations need to be, and she's just, we are so lucky and happy, she's doing a wonderful job. She does have a box on the wall, though, at the clinic, so she may not have a desk, but we did put a box on it with her name on it. But we appreciate all the work she's doing, and we appreciate the partnership with the Port Angeles Police Department, and that's something that we are, we're so excited about, and we are so excited about where we can go with this program. I don't see, there's not an end of services that we can provide, we just need to keep working on the staff, and keep working on funding, and being able to go out and bring care to those that need it the most.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel.
And let's take a five-minute break now, it is 7:07, we'll be back here about 7:12. So, thank you. Wonderful. The Environmental Foundation, Member of Understanding. Steve, is this something you're presenting?
You're up.
No, that's going to be me.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I was looking at it.
That's okay. So, gosh, I mean, we have the fire department giving their area's a seat, and concise reporting about the police department bringing in some exciting community items, and I get to talk about Memo's of Understanding. So, tough act to follow here, but I'll do my best, and I'm actually quite excited about this. So, some changes in Washington State Legislature, legislator, along with some continuing federal tax credits, have given the city the opportunity to take a look at a community solar project. These are projects that are obviously community-owned, and provides opportunities for people who are not homeowners, people that don't necessarily have the financial resources perhaps to spend $30,000 or $40,000 to put a solar project on their house, to still participate in a solar project. However, the clock is ticking with the funding sources, and the city, the staff do not feel that we necessarily have the expertise to truly do a thorough evaluation, tell whether a solar project would make sense here at the city. The Bonneville Environmental Foundation is a nonprofit that works with various stakeholders to encourage renewable energy projects. They have a lot of expertise for very small to very large community solar projects. And they have provided a Memo of Understanding to the city. This Memo of Understanding will provide their expertise and all their experience at no cost to the city.
Repeat that. Their magic words.
At no cost to the city, yes. So that the city can do a thorough evaluation to take a look at community solar and see if it makes sense for the community, as well as, as well as it makes sense from an operational and importantly as well, financial standpoint. So, you know, just to kind of wrap that up, the Memo of Understanding helped the city do a thorough evaluation at no cost to the city. Utility Advisory Committee has provided a positive recommendation to the city council, and so staff is asking the city council to authorize the city manager to sign a Memo of Understanding with the Bonneville Environmental Foundation.
Wonderful. So, Counsel, any questions on this?
This was discussed at the UAC and had a favorable recommendation. And whenever we can get expertise at no cost to the city, I think that gives us some valuable opportunity to see if we can work on this project, I think it's kind of exciting.
I agree with that. Anybody else? All right, Counsel, how shall we move forward?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Bonneville Environmental Foundation.
Any further discussion? All right, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So, on to contracts and purchasing, Sergeant Engineering Amendment Number Three.
Hello, Clarisse Reid Jenny, City Engineer. As I'm sure you're all aware, Sergeant Engineers, who is our structural engineering provider, they were selected by our Q process and have been helping us with structurally related items on a task item basis. The latest task item that we're coming with for you today is for help inspecting the Marine Drive Channel Bridge project, which is about to start up. The Marine Drive Channel Bridge project, we did secure an STP grant, which is federal funds, to the tune of $510,000, and then the city funds make up the remainder. There are water in a sewer line across that bridge also. Most of the day-to-day inspection, the ordinary kind of inspection, our city staff will be doing, but there are some, like specialized inspections that are required by this federal money, that we are not capable of doing, and that's where Sergeant Engineers will come into the picture. Also, on page J5 of your packet, you can see how, I think I'm going to put this down, there, that's better. Okay, the Sergeant Engineers, their salary makes up approximately $7,700, and then there's pile driving inspection, which is about $10,600, and then the concrete testing for the items, that's when they pour the cylinders and then brighten to make sure. that's when they pour the cylinders and then break them to make sure the concrete's strong enough, is about $16,000. So, it's not all Sergeant's money. And then also, Mr. West, did this little tablet or table get passed out?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, we did a real quick, and again, we'll answer any questions specifically, but original contract and what the one, two, and then three, and then four.
I'm sorry, which two were referred to?
Council, on your bias, there was an additional spreadsheet, if you will, that addressed, we wanted to make sure Council was aware of what amendments one and two were, as well as what the original contract was intended for.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would ask that you would approve and authorize the city manager to sign Amendment Number Three with Sergeant Engineers.
Thank you. Okay, Council, any questions regarding this item? All right, no questions, so I move.
I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to sign Amendment Number Three at the National Service Agreement, PSA 2018-02, with Sergeant Engineers Incorporated, in the amount of $34,880, increasing the total contract not to exceed the amount of $159,751. Make minor modifications to the agreement necessary, and extend the completion date to June 30, 2018.
All right, any further discussion? Oops, sorry, that was the motion, I mean...
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, none. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We will go on to the harbor cleanup process. Work order number three, the change order number one.
When the Department of Ecology notified the city back in 2012 that it was a potentially liable party for the cleanup of harbor, the city joined with some other potentially liable parties and eventually entered into the agreement, and the goal of that agreement was to reduce a renewal investigation and feasibility study. And in the interim, the city can, the GOP's prior consultants, we've had work, and we now look back to have filed a draft RIFs, a renewal investigation and feasibility study with the Department of Ecology. And so sometimes it doesn't seem like on these projects we make progress, but here we have come very close to the goal that we originally set out in 2012. After the RIFs draft was filed with the Department of Ecology, the Department of Ecology makes comments on it, and our technical consultants and the technical comments decide what other additional work we might need to do to speed the process along. In this case, consultants have advised us that one of the additional tasks that they think would help us get the RIFs from draft to final is to use additional studies, particularly around the Lagoon. And so the agreements that we're asking you approve tonight, well, there are two elements of it. One is a agreement that sets the scope of work to do these studies that the consultants have, and that will be helpful to the RIFs process, and then also the adoption of what they call Task 10, which is a funding mechanism for it. Now, the city and its 2018 budget already have budgeted the money, but we don't have the allocation to spend the money. So, in combination, the change order that we're asking for, plus Task 10, is the authorization to do the work and the authorization to pay for it. So, that's what we're asking Council to do tonight.
May Council, do we have any questions on this item? I know, just for the audience, we have gone through this before, so, seeing none, how are we going to move forward?
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute change order number one, and the addition of Task 10 to work order number three has shown that the attached under approve minor modifications to the work orders needed, and I assure you that we all know what all those orders are.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Any questions? All right, so we are on to Council reports. We will start with Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan.
All right, number three was, that was already done in consent agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry. Two things, two things. First of all, I had the fun time of driving 14 artists around the Olympic Peninsula on Saturday in our new senior center bus, giving them some ideas where they might want to paint. This week, if you're not aware, is, it was Fine Arts Center, Paint the Peninsula by Planet Air. And so I strongly encourage you to go up to the Fine Arts Center and see the work of these local artists, not, they're not local artists, I should say, artists from all over the country, really, and that have painted our environment and are competing for some wonderful prizes, but it's, it's really a spectacular event, some beautiful artwork, and it's now available at the, at the Fine Arts Center, and the competition for the, for the National Park, Olympic National Park Award will be Thursday night, and then Saturday evening will be the awards cocktail party for the Best of Show and so forth. So, anyway, it was, it was a great honor and privilege to visit with these 14 fascinating people for about four and a half, five hours on Saturday. Second thing I'd like to share with you is that I'm really pleased to announce that we've gotten the go-ahead through Peninsula Area Public Access to film and broadcast live all the Port Angeles High School football games this, this season. And as sports director of Public Access TV, I will be your play-by-play announcer on the Public Access TV, and it will be live TV. So, it will be available on 28/21, and it will be streaming live on the internet, so you can, if this city council meeting doesn't work out, I have a fallback occupation, but we're really excited for the opportunity to broadcast our favorite football live on TV, and the first game is September 7th, our first home game is September 7th. And so I'm really, really excited about that, and so I'm working on my elektro machine. Thank you.
So, I have two topics. The first is, I was at the Public Candy Fair Booth for the Chamber of Commerce, Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce, on Sunday, had some really good conversations with some local people about interesting city business, and it was a lot of fun. And, you know, one thing that I kind of just reflect on is how lucky I am to be kind of, you know, entering the public sphere at the time that I was, with being on board of the Chamber of Commerce has been an amazing experience for me. The Chamber is doing some really exciting things. I was at a meeting yesterday in downtown talking about a certain property that people are going to be trying to revitalize, and it's just very exciting to see the Chamber have really amazing influence over some really big, big things happening in Port Angeles. And, you know, joining the people board at the time that I did, I feel really lucky to just be on the ground of some organizations who are doing some amazing work in Port Angeles. Secondly, one of the, at our last think tank, we had a really great discussion, and I appreciate everybody. One of the resources that I brought up was that Center for Community Progress, which has a website that has a lot of great resources. And I have another one that I've been kind of investigating lately, which is the Congressman of New Urbanism, which they have a website called cmu.org. And there, you know, I'll just read a little bit. Their, their planning and development approach, New Urbanism's a planning and development approach based on the principles about cities and towns that have been built for the last several centuries, walkable blocks and streets, housing and shopping in close proximity, and accessible public spaces. And, you know, so they're focused on a lot of really good design principles of how humans live in cities and towns, and they have a lot of great resources on there. One of the podcasts that I just listened to, which was on Strong Towns Podcast feed, was about suburban sprawl retrofitting, and it was about, you know, how do we take these built environments that were built in ways that didn't have a lot of design foresight, that were built for kind of a culture that doesn't necessarily fit? You know, if you look at how do people live in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s, and post-war World War II, family sizes were a lot bigger. And so when you talk about single-family homes, often that meant six to eight people, sometimes grandparents, two. Millennials have fewer kids, and so, you know, if we continue to go down the single-family household path of better communities, we're looking at much lower density in our cities. And that's something that, when you talk about utilities, when you talk about just the basic maintenance we have to do for our city, that, those kind of density losses really matter to our bottom line, and what services we can offer. And so looking for a different approach is really valuable, and they have some really great resources. That podcast was called Suburban Poverty Needs Sprawl Retrofit, and it was a really great groundtable discussion, people, a lot of experts at the Congress for New Urbanism, and I have to recommend that, that website, it is a resource, so. Thanks. I've been very busy. Sorry. So, yeah, that discussion, I listened to that as well, and there was a comment there about, well, what if people were charged with utility rates based on the cost of getting their connection, rather than just kind of like same cost for, for kind of same, same use? And, you know, the message was, you know, people would choose, you know, more compact living, maybe more apartments than more single-family housing, and that's basically something that we, we do as a city. We subsidize a land use pattern that we can't afford to continue to do, and then we don't charge people appropriately, so it's externalized to our budget. So, you know, that's something that we need to work on. I want to talk about two things. One is that Deputy Mayor Dexter and I were fortunate to meet a federal researcher working on a project called Decision Integration for Strong Communities Association for Washington Cities Conference in Yakima earlier this summer. It's a project that would give smaller cities like Port Angeles an organized set of metrics to measure our progress toward economic, social, and environmental sustainability. We have a lot of those goals in our comprehensive plan, although one thing we've been talking about is how we don't have a way to measure whether we're achieving those goals. So, earlier today, two of those researchers, Dave Obrisk and Vicky Salazar, came out and met with Mira Brook and a couple of staff and myself, and they wanted a smaller discussion, so it wasn't something that included the entire council on, but they hopefully will be back next year after getting, you know, the project more up and running, and share what, what it could do for us in terms of being able to measure where we are toward those different goals as a community. So, I just want to fill in the rest of the council and the community as a whole on that. So, second thing is, I spent a lot of time this weekend looking at the arguments that people are making around affordable housing policy, and, you know, this, this has to do, you know, I was doing this specifically now because of the temporary dwelling unit ordinance that's before the planning commission tomorrow, 6:00 p.m., and Mr. DeFron, DeFron Garizil? My last name's Sherman Lawrence, so I, yeah, but please do come and comment tomorrow at the planning commission meeting at 6:00 p.m., because they are hearing about this ordinance as well. So, one of those arguments is about property value, and so I tried to dig into the research. You know, I'm a former science educator, a lawyer, so I like evidence, and I wanted to figure out, you know, what's behind this, and I couldn't find a lot of the studies, or really many studies supporting the argument that affordable housing reduces property value. Now, of course, you know, everything is contextual, and there's a lot of, you know, difference in different studies in different locations and stuff, but there was a summary of some of that research from the Department of Ecology that I thought was worth sharing, since this is something that we're going to deal with in all of the housing policy changes that we're talking about. And I think as a council, we prioritize trying to address a lot of things related to housing, and so I just want to make clear that this is beyond just the temporary dwelling unit ordinance that I put forward, but, you know, just with everything that we're talking about, we're going to run into this argument, and it's important that we, as a community, make these decisions with as much research and study as possible. So, I just want to read a little bit of this summary, because I think it would be helpful for us in advancing this conversation. Most studies have found that affordable housing does not depress property values. Of 31 studies that examined whether non-market housing hurts surrounding property values in California, one recorded a negative impact. Nineteen found no discernible effect, and seven documented a rise in property values, the others were inconclusive. As long as 20 years ago, the VC government undertook a study to address NIBI or Not My Backyard concerns by tracking seven social housing projects across the Lower Mainland, Vancouver Island, and interior, and each case neighbors didn't want the property to happen because they worried property values would take a hit. Over five years, appraisers reviewed sale prices in nearby homes and compared them to a controlled area, and found that prices near the projects increased as much as or more than houses in the control area. There was no evidence that property values were negatively impacted by nearby social housing. A University of Minnesota study even found that property gained $85 in value for every 30 meters closer it was to well-managed nonprofit multifamily subsidized housing. Research also suggests that low-income housing developments can reduce the risk of crime rather than add to it, according to the National Homeless Initiative. Between 1997 and 2006, the Toronto neighborhood around supportive housing facilities saw dispatched emergency calls fall 27% and 11.5% decrease in assaults, and sexual assaults dropped by almost a third, according to a Walsley Institute report. Vancouver Coastal Health started, stated in 2007 that a review of over 25 years had uncovered no evidence that there would, that, quote, "there had been an increase in crimes in areas around supportive housing buildings," end quote. Neighbors made few complaint calls about the projects. Indeed, Not My Backyard concerns or Can This Property Value Concerns may be self-defeating. A report by the National Homeless Initiative found that when community opposition to housing the homeless succeeded, it actually created more crime by cutting down the number of options for people who would otherwise have resided and received care in the proposed facilities. So, you know, any single study is, is relative to that study area. You know, I'd appreciate seeing contradictory research, but so far it really seems like, you know, as another report said, social scientists have moved on from this issue because they've kind of figured it out, and it's not, it's not an issue. So, I appreciate us making decisions based on research and policy, because that's, that's our job as community leaders and as the city. Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Yeah.
You'll be able to comment at the end, and please do.
Thank you. All right, Council, move ahead.
Somebody sent me this, early this morning, I thought it was kind of funny, it must be somebody that watches on TV. They said, "I'd like to report that the flower boxes around town look absolutely beautiful. The city workers are doing a fabulous job at keeping them watered and looking just great." I thought about that for a minute, and it is true. They're out there every day watering those flowers. It's, maybe at times, not always the safest job, they're parked down the street, they're probably parked across from places downtown, and they get it done, though, and it looks great, and I think it does make our city look better for visitors that come into town. It is a happy, bright place to look at, and not that we should cover up the things we don't like to look at, but it adds a good mixture for everything in between. The other one is, I didn't think about it today either, till Dan said something, because it's kind of affecting my world differently than thinking of just as the city, but there are some projects in town that have come to a stop because the operating engineers have gone on strike. So, I don't know how long that strike's going to last, it would have been, I believe Lakeside estimate was three weeks, hopefully, it's a lot less than that, that these groups can come together and come up with a contract, but you reminded me that that is, a 10-street project is temporarily on hold, unfortunately. So, encouragement to those folks to talk about it and get it help us so we can move on to some of our projects.
Well, I would like to recognize a celebrity amongst us this evening, Dee Filamonte is here. She always comes to our meetings. She is the executive director of our Senior and Community Center, and has just done a marvelous job. And Cory, what's the rumor going on with Dee?
Well, the rumor is that, and we'll
Well, the rumor is that, and I told her, actually she told me not to say a whole lot, she didn't want a whole lot, and so I'm keeping my promise, I'll keep it short. And on August 31st is when she retired from the city of Port Angeles.
We owe her a huge debt of gratitude.
And on her last day at the senior center, there will be a little get-together, so if they are able to come down and join the fun, and we'll let you know times when that's available.
Good. Thank you. And then I just have one other thing I wanted to mention. I wanted to talk about our city council and city manager form of government, because as a council, we only have one employee, and that is our city manager. And we may not instruct any other city employees, because under the council manager statutes, the city council is prohibited from interfering with the city manager's administration. Our job is to set policies, our priorities, and work with our city budget to have a balanced approach to our resources, through our annual budget. And our mayor, in this form of government, presides the council meetings and is recognized for ceremonial purposes, but has no regular administrative duties that fall under the authority of the city manager. So RCW 35813120 covers our form of government, and it says, "Except for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the manager, and neither the council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager, either publicly or privately." During our last think tank, it was suggested that we should move a police officer from active duty to enforcement issues. And this is not really in the purview of our responsibility, and I've received comment on that. So I just hope that as council members, we can understand and stay within the parameters of our authority and work on the projects that we have. So thank you. That's all. Yeah. Thank you.
And since I'm the one that made that comment, it was a think tank. It's a brainstorming session. We were talking about code enforcement and where possibly, you know, could we get budgets for a code enforcement. So like I said, I consider a think tank a place to just throw ideas. No ideas are bad ideas, they're just ideas, until they get vetted by the council. So that's, that is the light, and that's where it should be taken into it. So I attended the MRC meetings. They had, they have six interns. The interns presented their projects yesterday. And there were some really interesting projects about counting the green crab, some of the, there's different bird counts, measuring the kelp beds. So I would hope that, hopefully the press will get a chance to put some of these projects up. They're very, very interesting. The MRC is a community of citizen scientists, and so we're working to go ahead and grow the science and like to monitor how many people are at the new beaches and, you know, how much dog poop's out there and things like that. So it's a, it's a really great committee, and the work that the interns did this year was really fun to watch that presentation. And the second thing I have was that we are still applying for this Coast Guard community's status. I know that we finally got a chance to speak with some of the folks from the DC. One of the things that we might want to ask the business community, and I'm going to be talking to the superintendent of schools, is how can we make this community a little more welcoming to Coast Guard folks? Because they're usually here for, you know, whether it's a year or two years, and then they move on. So some of the suggestions were things like potentially having some business put up a little sign on their windows saying, you know, "We give Coast Guard discounts, Cal Care Better" or a discount kind of thing, or things like that. I know that, like I said, I'll be having a conversation with superintendent to see maybe is there some way we can welcome their kids into a school, into our schools, knowing that they may only be here for two years. And it's really hard for a kid to go through that kind of thing.
Yeah, and when I was on, I'm still on, but our previous year, we had one of our best volunteers at Hamilton for our retail was a Coast Guard mom. And so that's great.
You know, and recognizing, you know, the services they do and knowing, again, how hard it is to go every time, you know, create this new community for their families. So so much fun working on that. And finally, I just wanted to remind folks, I will be out of town beginning August 31st to September 8th. So I will be, you know.
I forgot something else from my report, that's okay. While I was at the fair, I did go by the city's booth where they had our Stormwater guys out there doing an informational booth, and it was really cool. They had a fun little kid's game regarding dog poop. And there, I had actually, I got to meet Bruce, who I'd never met before, which is great, Bruce Dorsey. And I had a really great conversation with Vince from the hearing on Stormwater and the new permit that is, that I'm sure none of us have really read the whole thing yet. And he gave me some good, like, you know, overview of what he was going through. And, you know, we have some great resources within our staff with regards to these issues that are really big pressing issues. Vince MacIntyre and also Jonathan. And so one thing that Vince actually mentioned was, he heard our mayor and we were talking about the checklist that we have that we work in ecology. And he said, "One of the great things that people don't realize is, we're way ahead of the curve on that. Other cities, when we go to conferences, will say, 'Hey, check with the city of Port Angeles, they have this really great checklist.'" So, you know, we're doing a lot of good work. It was a really cool booth, they had a lot of fun with it, and so, thank you.
That's great. Great to hear that. All right, on to information, city manager report.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a couple items. The first is you do have the Port Angeles Police Department's media report. And I know you've heard a little bit about that tonight, but it is a fairly comprehensive report, includes a lot of good information. If you have time, I would encourage you to read that. And if you have any questions, of course, you can be able to shoot Smith, and he would be glad to go over that with you. And you receive the fire department's media report. I doubt if they'll have any questions, but they will tell you that they've been very busy. There are a couple other items. One of them is that next Tuesday, we have a work session starting at 5:00. It will be one of my last presentations for the city council. We have a lot of good information to go over. And just a reminder that that is next Tuesday at 5:00. Last, we have Attorney Gore will be discussing with the council, appointing one of the council members to an ad hoc work group.
Do we have to attend that meeting next Tuesday?
Here's now where we learn how to keep the city out of financial trouble, and everyone who's interested in seeing a lot of financial risk organizations should attend.
So in late 2015, the City of Port Angeles City Splitment County entered into a contract to consolidate criminal justice services. And so that contract's been in effect, it went into effect January 1st, 2016, so all 16, all 17, and until this part of 18. And there have been some comments, and we've got that contract, the future of the contract lately in public. But one thing that may have been overlooked is that the contract itself provides for an annual review. And by the, in the annual review, provision of the contract says, in part, "The terms and operations of this agreement shall be reviewed annually in August each year. The purpose of the review is to ensure that consolidation of government services is successful and to identify the changes or improvements that might make this arrangement more beneficial to the citizens of both counties." So that annual review is now scheduled for two weeks from March. And the contract itself identifies who will attend that annual review. And one member to attend the annual review is a city council, Port Angeles city council person. And so we'd like to ask the council to identify the person who will attend, be the representative, so that we can advance that meeting, sort of staff, and meet the council member, and give them background information. There's a tremendous amount of background information on this contract, why it was formed, and what the situation was prior to the formation of the contract.
What time is the meeting, Bill? What time? What time is the meeting?
I think it starts at 8:30, remember?
That's correct.
8:30. So, and of course, it's up to the council to determine who you want to attend. I am informed. The council member Dexter is interested in that. And in the time-honored tradition, committees everywhere, we have a couple personally out there. But I'm just, I'm just saying that because I was told that she was interested in it. So apart from that, I'm just asking council appointments, so please.
All right, council, anybody interested in attending that?
I would.
I nominate Councilmember Dexter, Councildeputy Mayor.
Okay, never mind.
No.
I was going to say, I would be interested.
But Jim, if you're interested, that's.
Yeah, right.
We have a better alternative, too.
Yeah.
Right. So we've got two folks that are interested in that.
That's great.
So, yeah, and like I said, I know he's not here to also place or put her, to sit in. So Jim, would you mind being the alternate if she, you know, to attend, so that, you know? So I think at this point, if you can have, if council's okay with that, if you're, you got you to be the main one and then as a backup, Jim.
Sounds great.
That sounds wonderful. Well, thank you.
I also forgot about calendar issues. We're talking about that. A work session next week, what week is today, correct? At 5:00 PM? I might be five, 10 minutes late. I'm having my ham and ham, too, right before that.
All right. So we're going to go on to the second public comment period. So this is a time for anybody in the audience who would like to come speak to us about anything, just state your name and whether you reside in the city of Port Angeles or not.
Thank you. My name's Tony Deepengrozville. I reside at 1220 West Fourth Street, Port Angeles. And with all due respect, councilmen, I'm not concerned about California, Canada, or Michigan. I'm concerned about Port Angeles. And I don't feel it's my responsibility to jeopardize my property values on your personal assurance that it's not going to go down. And quite frankly, I think your energy would be better spent trying to figure out ways to entice businesses to come to Port Angeles, to employ more people, so some of these closed-down storefronts will reopen and stimulate our economy than random zoning that you've suggested. Thank you.
All right, so anybody else?
Marilyn Smith, Port Angeles. We aren't making any more land. Prices have gone up ridiculously. Most people in this town, even with two wagers, can barely afford to down payment or to get a home. We need to come up with some way that people can live. I know that one of the things that's happening in Northern California is they're allowing ADUs and they're actually streamlining the process of putting an ADU, which is an actual stick-built home, also known as in-law unit, in the backyard. And that does benefit the property value, because when you buy a home, you have a built-in rental unit, which helps pay that mortgage. And lenders do actually consider that when giving you a loan. So it would be to our benefit for the right-sized property, for the right zoning in this community, to have a streamlined ADU. The other thing that's actually really would be nice would be a lot of clarification in our zoning about pocket communities, which is where there's enough space behind the homes, because there's a lot of really big properties in Port Angeles. They could have four, or five, or even 10 houses in the backyard. You know, up towards Olympus, where I am, we all have huge backyards, and we could put in other units. Some of those properties have already been developed previously with two or three small houses behind the main house. But with our zoning change that we had a few years ago, it made it very muddy on what we have to do and what we need to do. How do we handle water runoff? How do we handle the sewer connections? How do we do all that stuff? My only concern about temporary anything is that that doesn't improve your property value. What does improve your property value is putting in extra utilities that are coded to, you know, water lines, sewer line two foot apart, electrical on a conduit, you know, protection of the electric, you know, outlet that's there with a good circuit, and also to have enough of a fire break between whatever unit in the home. I'd really like this to be a big conversation. Meanwhile, other communities have set up empty lots in town to house the unhomed, and that's not a bad part of your concept either. I think it's a big topic, and I think we have to address it, because this isn't going to get any better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to come speak to council? Anything whatsoever? All right. Well, seeing no one else, we have come to the end of our agenda, so we are concerned. Thank you, council.